Move into a regular scheduled meeting. This time we go ahead and call me in to order. Please turn all electronic devices off for tonight at this time. Hey, Mr. Philip Paul, would you please lead us in our current place to see what's up?
Father God, we are so grateful for your many blessings. I thank you so much for our full likes and for your love. I pray that you will guide us, help us to make the best decisions for the citizens of Ballinger, and the decisions are within your will. I pray this is Jesus' name. Pledge of leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united out, made invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Second, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the August 1st, 2016 meeting. You all have time to review.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 1st, 2016 meeting with corrections as noted.
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. All right, this was your non-alien regular general. We'll be given the opportunity to address the council on these subjects at this time. Anyone here not only doing it? Y'all aren't doing it?
They are.
You guess so, or I'm so? Maybe so. Baby. All right, we move to the table to discuss the action, take action on the condemnation of property located at 1309 Broadway. Any motion or good business from the table?
I make a motion and we remove the action to condemn the property located at 1309 Broadway.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did visit with Mr. Paulie Corals on this property, and he is going to move forward on it. He has some of the materials, and he had already started on it this last weekend. And he's, he said he's going to get everything outside done first, work on the outside of the house first, and get everything up to code. But they already started cleaning it last Saturday. It's already looking better. He understands council's, you know, persistence to get this done clean.
It may take a long time to get the inside clean, though.
Well, he's not worried about it. He wants to get the outside because of, he says it's not.
All of the stuff gone.
Right. He's hauling it off. He started hauling it off. The front yard's already done, side yard, one side's done, the other side's already done. I move by that way. So he's already started on it as he said he would, and he's already moving forward. He knows there's back taxes on it, and he's going to pay that, but he's going to do the work. And we asked him, I told him it depend on council, but I said, you know, we do a six month a year, but we needed updates. Ask you for next progress. But I also told him, you know, certain council people might be driving by looking at it. Check it out. Well, that's what I told him. He says, well, that's kind of hard, and it's right there. He says, I'd ask him to see it, so, I mean, but he understands.
So the old garage will be gone and all of that?
Definitely. He told me he was going to start cleaning and hauling stuff off, and that's what he's been doing. I mean, that one side yard, the front, and then the other side, they were working on the other side yard today. But they, he said they were going to be out there most of the weekend. I didn't go by until today, but they already made a huge amount of progress along the side and the front. Hauling it off, cleaning it up, so, you know, he's got a lot of work ahead of him there. So are we okay with that, everybody?
If we're moving it?
Well, we can, we can remove from the table. We can give him six months or a year, a regular comfortable, like we've done in the past, to make improvements with regular communication with city staff as the improvement.
So I make a motion, we give him six months, check that for the six months we can review progress.
You want communication during the six months or at the end of six months?
I think at the end of six months, we just stay in communication, you know?
Okay.
We want to, but I think.
Okay.
If he comes back in the six months, I'll look for progress.
Okay.
If it doesn't be done, it's a little bit.
Wait, make progress. Right. All right, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, discuss and take action to discuss reducing the per gallon water rate. Hey, you sure have something in your ticket.
Yes.
Concerning such.
I should have a spreadsheet here. Couple things came into play. As you know, and if anybody has been out and seen, we have two full lakes. And we're going to give Randy, give her all the credit for that.
We're going to come beat you up in this one.
Yeah.
We're still wondering why you didn't do it earlier.
Y'all need to work.
We, from May to June, we were sending about half million gallons of water a day to town. We amended the water restrictions on, in June, I think before the January 15 billing. So from June to July, and we've been saying this all summer, but from June to July, everybody went nuts. And at one point, we were sending 1.2.
In June, we did, this is what we sent to town. Now, I don't know what you mean, Bill. In June, we sent nearly 14 million to town, and July, 18 million, and then August was 16 million.
Okay, that's not per day?
No, that's per month.
Yeah.
We got a lead, that's per day.
So clearly, we have more water still, and our residents have. We did not know what they would do, but they still stayed where they always been, and what we're going to do. So we had some discussions about could we lower water rates in general. The next thing, and this just happened Friday morning, Friday afternoon, we got our rate letter from C R M W D. And somehow, it got sent to Miller, Giedul, and never got sent to us. We typically get it sooner. They actually dropped the rate from $1.57 to $1.44 per thousand. And so that'll, that'll give us some savings there as well. So I have, for your consideration, a couple of models, alternatives, I should say. This is, everything's based off of 4,000 gallon water bill. Now, keep in mind, I am putting garbage, street, and brush and everything in there. Because when people come in to pay their bill, they just associate it with water. So we could cut the water rate, you know, a little or a lot, and there's still just really a bottom line number. So currently, the base for water rate is for 2,000 gallons is $40. From 2,000 to 3,000 gallons, another 7.80, and from 3,000 to 4,000, another 7.80. And so your total's about 111, 10. There's some taxes in there, but this is generally 99% of what your bills would be. The first alternative exempts the first 4,000 gallons. And it would keep everything else after that at 7.80.
What were we going to change? Didn't we change that two years back?
These two years. It was 6,000?
6,000, you're protecting them 6,000?
No.
4,000 gallons.
4,000 gallons, that's what I thought.
Okay.
And then we went down to 2.
Went down to 2, and instead, hey, yeah, all right. Alternative number two exempts the first 3,000 gallons, and then anything after that would be 7.80. And alternative number three exempts the first 2,000 gallons, but lowers the per thousand rate to 6.50. And we can play, you know, we can, I think Randy and I agree that probably one below 6.50 on a per thousand basis may not be the best moving forward. Keep in mind, we're about to enter a period from November, November, December, January, February, where consumption's going to be 400,000 to 500,000.
A day.
A day. And so you will take, and just naturally, there are not much water. No one's going to be watering their yard at Christmas. So we do have a couple of options. Thing we don't have on here is we can do a summer, summer rate schedule, fall rate schedule, or spring and fall, whatever however you want to call it. Peak, peak schedule, non-peak. That would generally, you know, that would, there's another alternative there if y'all are interested in that.
Does that work in other places?
Yes, it has. What it does, it helps stabilize your water rates, your water revenues in the, in the, in those winter months, essentially. And then it encourages watering, greening yards, beautification, things like that, starting in April and moving through the summer and fall months.
Is the average household usage?
Don't look at mine this month.
Don't worry about it. It's 4,000 to 5,000 gallons on average. Yeah. That's why I chose this, this number.
I do think we need to lower the rates. I mean, we're not here to make money. We need to pay the bills, and we need to put some back for investment, but I think we need to lower the rates. But we have two full lakes. I mean, we need to sell it, park it, evacuate it there. So it'll be interesting to see if we do lower the rates, if usage goes up. That's what economics says is going to happen. But economics hasn't worked before.
This is probably the first year that we, our water count has been up and not been full, right?
Um, good luck.
Real long. I don't think any of these proposals will persist in the whole.
I don't, I don't think, no, they wouldn't. If, if I started seeing that, I'd come back to you guys and say, we got to do something. You know, we can, and you can make modifications based on revenues anyway. You make adjustments to your, to your budget based, you know, if we don't have it, we don't go buy it, that kind of sort of deal. We got to make sure that, that we, the base rate needs to stay the same because that's what we pay our debt service with. Anything else after that can change. But we got to make sure that Randy's paying, not Randy, sorry.
We want to be paid.
I want to make sure he's paying. We got to make sure the debt service and the water plan's paying. We got to make sure that we generate enough revenue to pay for Miller, Giedul, the transportation fee to Appleland, all the things we went through on the budget. We got to make sure that those things are taken care of first. Everything else we can adjust. If we don't have enough money to go buy pipes, then we just don't replace pipe out here, or we just don't replace lines out here or whatever. But other things can be modified. Those three things, there's really no fluctuation or variance. The chemicals and the other things, Randy's got to do something to treat, you've got to use something to treat the water.
With, with two full lakes, do you see, like, is the lake going to turn over? Or is there anything out there in front of us that's going to affect quality of water?
We, well, of course, you say two full lakes. We don't actually have two full lakes.
Well, compared to what they were.
Yeah. But our lakes are so shallow, you really don't see that turnover that much. It could be maybe in the new lake, but you know, you're looking at the biggest place, maybe 25 feet. So you don't really get much of a thermal climb.
So we don't see?
We see some, but not.
We don't think the other, our future that could require us to heck of a lot of treatment? Like, is the body filled from 23% to 90%?
Yeah. Well, what, what causes most of our treatment problems are the salt seafills. Now, if I'd be goes to 75%, it's really, it's nasty now, but it's really, it's nasty if it goes, you know, filled up and it's closed. I was out there at our lake Saturday, and the, the water's starting to flare up a little around the pump station and the night light. But you go up the creek, and it's, it's black. The black will get, it'll tarnish the creek. But it's all that vegetation. But the next one, I think they hear about it. And until she does, we're going to use oxygen.
On highway, we need to leave the base like it is. But either one, alternative one or two, it's not bad to propose.
This is why y'all get paid the big bucks. If you look at it from a straight, or from a relief standpoint, if you will, from our customers, alternative one is going to provide them with a ton of relief. Of the three, I like alternative two the best because it definitely provides attainable relief. But it also, it's almost a safety net for us. But, you know, we can make all, we can make them all work. The thing it won't do, that alternative three does, the thing that one and two doesn't do is if you fill up your swimming pool, or if you run your water sprinkler, and I'm not making this up, a guy came in and said he ran his sprinkler for 30 minutes on each station. And he has like eight stations every day. If you're watering that kind of, if you're using that kind of water, or you're filling your swimming pool up, you're going to have a high water bill.
Or if you make your water on.
That may or may not happen to the city council person.
No.
But it, it really depends on what your end goal is. Do you want, you know, if you want to encourage people watering their yards, and then clearly, number one and two are going to get you there. If you want to encourage conservation with a little bit of both, a blended, number three is going to get you there. If you want to provide significant relief, number one gets you there. If you want to kind of do a mixture of both, number two gets you there. I'm trying to put as many options at y'all's disposal as possible.
What if, what if we proposed alternative two for the winter months?
Okay.
And then looked at, looked at a reduction in the per thousand usage for the summer months?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
We did, you are protecting them some to, you know, you did 3,000 gallons, you are protecting 3,000 gallons. But then in the summer months, really, it's either evaporate or use, or use it. You, you can reduce the per thousand rate, and we can set it, designate it for a certain time.
From?
Deliver that, April, you know, September or something.
October, yes.
October. And that way, cities protected in the long months to pay its bills. And then the high months, we're encouraging water usage, which theoretically will increase revenue.
Okay. Do you agree?
Does that make sense?
Do you agree, Dave?
Bo, you remember what, you know, when we used to have summer rates 25 years ago? You remember what months they ran through? Isn't March about June for September?
Yeah. I didn't know.
May through September, I don't remember, but I, we used to have.
We did, I don't know. I keep that in mind. But that way, you're, you know, you're, you're giving a break because we do have more low rates for water. And then also, in summer, we can encourage usage.
Sure.
Yes, which?
Which is the time that they're going to need to meet.
They're going to need to deal with.
And, you know, if we get to the end of next year, if it turns out our water uses whatnot, well, that's very doubtful. So as we know, you know?
Well, do you want to do it per thousand rate? Because it's September, we will rebuild.
We rebuild, if we do the, the, the per thousand rate for next year.
Okay. So we just keep the current rate structure in place?
Well, I think we go ahead and go alternative two.
Okay, beginning this?
Beginning now, or whenever.
Yeah, we'll read September, what's the name?
September.
So we'll read next week.
Right. So I think we begin the alternative two now, and then, but, but we may, we may not even have to propose it with the per thousand rate yet.
We can revisit, we will revisit it in, how about we revisit it in March?
Yeah.
And then that way, we can set rates for April or May, depending on.
Yeah, just put it in place, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But if it works, you know, it'll be heroes.
You're a hero.
No, you won't. You won't be a hero anyway.
Philip, you're always a hero. I liked it. I like that idea. You know, you're going to drop their water bill 10, 12 bucks a month. I mean, it's almost a free month of water compared to where we are now. It's not much, but it is something.
And it also gives us good feel of, at 3,000 gallons, does that meet our needs to the winter months?
Yeah.
Well, by the time we revisit in March, we'll already know how much we've generated and what our costs are, so.
Yes.
I don't know, since we did this more accurately, I'd like to turn it quickly over. Chemicals is going to threaten it.
Turn it, turn it.
Normally, when it, when it turned over, it doesn't affect the.
Or how people go to 90%.
Yeah, right. I turned it back, it was a big problem.
There was a question earlier on chemical usage.
Uh-huh.
Do you use more chemicals when people are on a higher volume or quality of water? Which influences your chemical usage more?
Probably the, the water quality dictates it more than anything. Now, we have changed, since our lake is full, and I've been calling it water, we've changed coagulants to a lesser expensive coagulant, but we do use more of that coagulant. But because the water quality has changed, we've had to change coagulants.
So if we go from, if we go from 500,000 gallons a day to 900,000 gallons, we're going to use more chemicals than 900,000.
Because it's all based on per thousand, right?
Yeah. But probably, the exponential factor of that is the water quality.
Yeah.
Y'all have any other questions, sir? You all okay with it? Don't be quiet, so I'll start the next.
Yeah.
I make a motion, let me go, alternative two, starting with next month's water bill.
Starting in September.
Starting in September, and then relook at the per thousand usage in March.
Okay. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, discuss and take action on the proposals received from Bobby Fish for dental, vision, and life insurance coverage for all full-time employees.
Well, I want more about water, water breaks, and everything.
Really?
Help me greet my bill.
Hang around.
That's the number one priority thing we talk about here.
For San Angelo.
Yes. My name's Debbie Jet, and this is Lauren Forrest, and we are a residential ticket, uh, insurance in San Angelo. Bobby had been enrolled at further west of here, he was on his way back to San Angelo when we left, and just come up to Ballinger. So do you want to bust it out?
No.
This is my. Uh, we, excuse me, we handle the employer-paid dental, the employer-paid vision, uh, the employer-paid base life insurance, and then we have been offering a voluntary life insurance program uh, for a number of years if the employees allows the employees to purchase additional insurance uh, and have the premium payroll deducted. On the dental and the vision, the city of Ballinger pays for the employee-only premium. Uh, anybody that covers a dependent on the dental or the vision, again, has that premium payroll deducted, uh, and that's made for that premium yourselves. What we did this year, we hadn't been shocked in a while with different carriers. Uh, we wanted to see if we could get, uh, some better deals for the city on these three programs, dental, vision, and life insurance, and we think we have. Uh, what I've got here, uh, the spreadsheet page one, this is your current dental and your current vision plan. Uh, we are currently with Guardian. They, they're a good company, they're known for their dental and vision. Uh, we've been with them, you know what, five, six years maybe? Um, and you can see the benefits. The plan that the city has is a little different from, uh, what a lot of carriers have. There are two plans essentially that the employee can get from, but the premium is the same, uh, for either one of those plans. The value plan has a richer benefit, you'll notice, in the basic and in the major services. Uh, basic is at a hundred percent and major is at sixty percent. Uh, preventive is a hundred, and they pay up to fifteen hundred a calendar year. The catch on that one is that for, for the higher benefit levels to be, um, of any use to an employee, they really need to see an in-network dentist. Because out-of-network is based on the same formula that an in-network dentist is based on. And so it results in greater balance billing if they see an out-of-network provider. If they pick the NAP plan, that's Network Access Plan, uh, you can see the benefits. Um, there's a fifty deductible, the preventive is a hundred percent. The basic and major go from a hundred, a hundred percent and sixty percent to eighty percent and fifty percent. Here, it doesn't really matter if you see a network dentist or not, because out-of-network is paid at what we call the ninety percentile. That just means that ninety percent of the dentists in our areas are within that reasonable and customary, ten percent will be higher. So we don't see a lot of balance billing on that. You can see the rates below, our current rate, uh, through the month of September, our employee is twenty-five forty-four. Uh, it, we had an increase up to twenty-six seventy-one, which is not bad out there in today's dental world. But again, we just did want to see if we could do something better. The vision is also through Guardian. You can see there's in-network and out-of-network benefits, it's more important on the vision. Uh, if you're not on that value plan on the dental, to see a network provider, because they will file your plan for you, and you just get a better benefit. Uh, the deductible for exams is ten dollars for, uh, I think the benefits on here, it's off. Okay, it's, it's exam and, um, frames or contact, or lenses or contact lenses are both at a hundred percent after a ten or twenty-five dollar deductible. Then your single vision lenses and your bifocal, line bifocals are at a hundred percent, again, after the twenty-five dollar materials to pay. And on frames, they will cover up to a hundred and thirty dollars a calendar year. And lenses, they will cover up to, uh, contact lenses up to a hundred and thirty. You can have an exam, contact lenses, or eyeglass lenses every twelve months, and you can have frames every twenty-four months. And you can see that premium went from eight oh one to eight seventeen. The Guardian requires that the, the vision is deeply discounted when you have that with the dental. So if we get away with the Guardian dental, but wanted to keep the Guardian vision, you're gonna see about a thirty percent increase on those few benefits. Any questions?
Um, when Bobby visited with us the other day, we talked about Humana.
Yes, Humana, that will be on page three. And Humana would be our recommendation, actually. Um, the rates are less expensive. We're showing two different plans here, so the city wouldn't have the option of offering both plans or just picking one plan to offer. Uh, the first plan has a fifty dollar deductible, preventive at a hundred percent, basic at major at eighty percent, and major at fifty percent. The calendar year maximum is unlimited. Um, that, that includes, uh, your dentures, your crowns, your inlays, your onlays. They also have including coverage for implants. And they're the only company out there that we know of that has an unlimited calendar year maximum. Uh, we've written quite a bit of business with Humana in the last year and a half. We've not had any problems that I know of that they've brought to our office with how claims are processed or billings or anything like that. So we feel pretty comfortable recommending them to the city. Again, you get to offer one plan or both plans. If you offer both plans, we do have to have somebody in each plan though when they enroll. And the only difference between this unlimited plan and the second plan is, um, the second plan has the fifteen hundred calendar year maximum like we have right now in Guardian. And you can see the unlimited is twenty-four forty-one compared to, I believe, twenty-seven, twenty-six dollar, almost twenty-seven dollar premium you're gonna experience with Guardian.
What is, uh, Pendo period or basic and Pendo period and pager?
Um, those are, Entadonex is your root canal health period, Donex is your gum scraping, you know, with gum disease. Those are high-dollar procedures, and most of the time you see those in major services, uh, at fifty percent. So we'd like to point out, uh, when they are gonna receive a better benefit, in this case eighty percent with Humana.
Okay.
Um, He- Humana includes an open enrollment, that just means if somebody, let's say, committed to Humana, we have our open enrollment this month. Somebody doesn't wanna cover a dependent, this go around, they can add them this time next year without any, uh, penalties for being a late entrant or anything like that. The one thing they don't add that, um, Guardian has, Guardian gives you dental rewards. If you go to the dentist at least one time a year, and Guardian spends less than seven hundred and fifty dollars, they add, uh, dollars to the fifteen hundred maximum. But we feel like the unlimited calendar year maximum kinda takes care of the fact that they don't provide the rollover, because there's no limitations there at all. Y'all have any questions on the dental? Are there writing anything? The vision, uh, once again, I know I went, pulled it back and put what you were seeing here after the back, didn't realize that it was printed. But again, um, their con- their contract is a twelve, twelve, twelve contract, meaning you can have an exam, contact lenses or eyeglass lenses, or frames every twelve months. The Guardian contract is every calendar year for your, uh, exam and your eyeglass lenses or contact lenses, but every twenty-four months for every other calendar year for your frames. So you're already getting a better benefit, uh, by being able to purchase frames every twelve months. The, you have the same ten dollar annual exam on deductibles, but the deductible materials is ten dollars less, it's down to fifteen dollars, uh, from the twenty-five dollars that Guardian has. So you've got richer benefits all the way over to on the dental and the vision with Humana, and lower premiums. So that's why we would recommend them, the city will save money. Uh, your employees that cover dependents will also save in the premium that they're paying now. Questions? Okay, y'all flip to the page. You can see the providers, uh, Dr. Robbins is in the vision network, and I know Bobby, uh, I believe he spoke to, um, the husband of y'all's local dentist.
Yes.
Okay.
And he called me, um, how to say it last name?
That's what I was trying to ask you.
Uh, Dr. Noj called, uh, this afternoon. Um, they're currently not in-network with, with any insurance company. Um, I told him that, um, I would, you know, I wanna put a plan out there where our employees chose to stay here local and chose to utilize services here locally, I would encourage that, obviously. Um, he told me that as long as we slated a PPO plan, that he can be competitive with a number of dental providers in San Angelo. If we go to an HMO plan, uh, and I don't think there's an HMO plan on the menu.
Yeah.
Um, then, um, he would not really be competitive with them. And so, uh, my recommendation is, um, and, sorry if I'm still in the thunder, but.
That's all right.
Um, after the visit with Bo, uh, he used a Humana for our dental and our vision, um, the plans that they had brought forth. Um, it's just, like she said, it's cheaper for us, it's cheaper on the employees. Um, and we get the benefit of using local providers, which I thoroughly want to encourage. I believe as many professionals here can as we can possibly get.
Questions? Okay, the last thing we looked at was the life insurance, we've been with Sun Life forever. We really felt like we could do better, especially on the voluntary side of it. Uh, but you can see on page five, this is your current, uh, life insurance carrier, Sun Life. Uh, the city pays for the employees to have ten thousand dollars in life and accidental death dismemberment. And they pay you thirty-six cents per thousand dollars of benefit, uh, for that life insurance. And you can see that the monthly premium would be one thirty-six eighty, annual premium sixteen forty-one. Uh, the voluntary life insurance with Sun Life, we did get the guarantee issue for employee, it was at thirty thousand. We did negotiate with Sun Life, and they did agree to bump it up to fifty thousand. They also increased the guarantee issue on the spouse's twenty-five thousand, but we couldn't do anything with the child benefit of five thousand. You can see the rates below, uh, these are per thousand dollars of benefit, and they are based on the age bracket the employee and the spouses in. Okay? Our recommendation, if y'all want to move your life insurance, would be principal. Uh, principal quoted the same ten thousand dollar basic life insurance, uh, and accidental death dismemberment. The premium would be point three one nine per thousand, so that is less than the point thirty-six cents y'all are paying now, four thousand. We talked to principal about a fifty thousand guarantee issue on the life insurance, but it does not affect their voluntary rates at all. So we thought we would leave the guarantee issue for an employee under age seventy at a hundred thousand, so that is significantly more than they've been able to purchase with Sun Life right now. Uh, we do have a guarantee issue for the spouse of twenty-five thousand, and we do have a child benefit of ten thousand, which is most common out there in the world. Uh, they require twenty percent participation, which I think we're maybe thirty to thirty-five percent now, so we shouldn't have a problem. Uh, and if y'all compare the rates to Sun Life, um, they're not as low as we would like them to be, but they are lower than Sun Life rates. So again, both the city and the employee, uh, would be paying less in premium, and your employee has an opportunity to purchase considerably more life insurance, uh, for themselves if they want to. So that's why I'm recommending principal for those products.
Yeah, that would be in our recommendation as well.
Yeah, you've got some good options, really, this year.
Yes.
Any questions, somebody? Yeah.
So we're gonna talk about full-time employees, how many do we have?
Forty-four.
I mean, apples to apples are sort of a little difference in coverage.
You would just be, if you change to these carriers we're recommending, you're gonna get a richer benefit for your employees on all of those products. And, I'm sorry, I was just.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion.
We have business with all of these carriers, I'm real particular about things we've talked with, I'm seven eighths because of the way they work with me. Um, they've gotta be able to work with me so I can work with y'all. And all of these, we wouldn't have a problem with any of them, the premium.
Well, I make the motion that we go with Humana for the dental and the vision, and then you go with the principal for the life insurance.
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Do we need to amend it for both plans, or is that just something we need to designate?
If, if you wanna do it, that's fine.
Oh, for both plans?
Yeah.
I'm both dental plans? Is that what we're talking about?
You're talking about both of the plans?
Yeah.
We all have to offer, but if we can, I don't know, we need to have that kind of vote.
As long as you say the Humana plan is presented, I think, I think we're gonna be fine. Cause you've got one here, so, yeah.
They're in agreement.
I'm like, you make sure I understand, so we're gonna offer the unlimited?
Both, yeah, both plans.
All right, very good. Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip, homie.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, discuss and take action to extend the early voting for twelve hours on October twenty-fifth and November first, two thousand sixteen.
We have to have extended hours, two days of the voting period of, uh, early voting.
Okay.
Here at the. Uh, it's in the courthouse.
Okay.
Are both of those days during early voting then?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Are you, should we, the courthouse contract is on these pages, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. These are the days they're going to stay open for twelve hours so people who can, if they want early vote, they don't have to go between eight and five. I think they go seven to seven?
Yes.
Does that mean?
I make the motion that we extend early voting for twelve hours.
Second.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, consider a pool of building permits.
Is there any need to wait to see votes?
Yes.
Okay, Joe Martin is at forty zero seven, seven and B. Still a rod, twenty-four, twenty-four, I think, two, your rod. Uh, K I mask, at AO two thirteen, they wanna put it in a twelve hundred and fifteen square foot, uh, twelve. And I have, uh, it's a round one, and I have a document.
We're gonna have a question.
Is it?
That's not, that's not, we need to talk about it here.
Okay.
Uh, Mike Alarado, uh, seven hundred and eighty A. Uh, wants to build eighteen, about twenty, with the carport. Yeah. Yeah, one of the portable. Felipe Camarillo, uh, two oh seven strong, wants to run a, uh, installed building, put up a plan, but it's still. And, Gene Ford, five oh five thirteen, wants to put in two, twenty foot fireplaces. Now, if you have a question about that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, well, they're, they're older than ten years, but, now this was put in back in, uh, June.
Yeah, it was out there in August, I think.
Yeah.
Well.
Uh, but also, I think, y'all had talked about the, the language on the, uh, the improvements of the travel and the trade. But so far, I don't think that's been codified. Well, I'm not real sure that we can enforce that in the code. Which, I guess, still has to write it up for the mayor and the governor to sign and all that.
Talk about.
Well, we can really insert it into the code book.
Has the ordinance been codified?
No.
When did we make the changes to?
Uh.
I don't think I did make.
Yeah. You're right, I, we've already been voted on, they've already voted on? Yeah, they've already voted on it.
Then I think it's, it's, uh, it's a mine.
Well, it is, but it's not codified, or codified, but it's.
Not in a code book.
It's not in a code book. It's never been signed in by the mayor.
Yes, they still voted to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what you wanna do?
We, we, we made some additional, uh, made some changes to the trailer house ordinance. Uh, and, uh, we need to get it packed up so the mayor can sign it. Well. And I've got, I've got a, a copy of it in there that I.
And the question is, the council passed changes to the travel trailer ordinance?
Pardon?
The council passed the, the changes to the travel trailer ordinance?
Yeah.
We, we voted it and passed it, but since it hasn't been put in the code book, is it enforceable? Even though the council passed it? And we passed the changes, and the purpose of it, we want them in.
Well, if we passed the changes, then I could be mad.
Yeah.
From, from the time the vote was taken, right?
In the down here. Of the passage.
Yeah.
So just the fact, the fact that it hasn't been added to the code book is irrelevant?
We probably need it in there.
Yeah, it's impossible.
It would make life easier.
Well, we had some pushback on it, you know.
Hey, I hope.
I'm glad you asked.
The intent of the council, and I think it was clearly stated at the council meeting, the language was read at the council meeting. The intent of the council was for that language to be enforceable from that moment, from that vote period, from that, from that moment on. There wasn't, uh, there wasn't any sort of grace period. Um, the, the question becomes, did we pass the ordinance before or after the trailer houses were put in? That's, that's the question I'm wondering.
The trailers were there?
There are two travel trailers.
Yeah, but when did they move them?
Oh, was it, yeah.
Before, before she did this. They were already there before that, then.
Uh, I, I think so.
But even before that, did you have two trailers called one lot?
The way.
They, it's, they're not.
The way the lot.
It's not helping, that's.
Yeah, the, the way, well, I, I know where you're going, so go ahead.
Okay. This block is one of those odd blocks that has two alleys that had two alleys. This one alley here is closed, and the best we can measure it out, one of those trailers was sitting on this forward lot, and another was sitting back here.
But they're sitting side by side?
Yeah. They put their own separate lot.
By the surface.
Because see, that alley, there was two alleys, there a long time, years ago. And this one's closed. That was one of them.
Two alleys side by side?
Yeah, well, they're a sixty degree park. Where's, uh, it's, uh.
Are those trailers being occupied right now?
I, I don't think anyone's doing it. This is right here, it's closed. And see, there are eighteen lots in that lot. And one was probably was sitting here, and the other was living here on this lot. I think it's an odd, it's an odd lot, odd lot, but that's the way it, part of the way it's back here.
Well, I think, even if that's not enforceable, the code change is enforceable, so we just gotta figure out a way to settle it.
I would agree.
But I can also see that point too, though.
Well, that, that doesn't matter, the code, it's just that the code says anything over to.
Well, that's true, that part of it, yes.
Bo, you have any minute with me? Yes, I, I can patch another one, it's a continuous lot, can you start putting travel trailer loans, we need to apply for a permit for it to.
Or remark to a permit or something. And we gave you that process.
Because that's what they're going to be basically useful.
Well, yeah, but, uh, you know, we don't have any time to. Well, yeah, but, uh, no, we don't have any time to, to clean the, the signs. You know, whether it be a tribal house or a tribal trailer, whatever it is, you know? There's nothing that, that would, that would, you know, it says, you put a home up there, it's got to be worth.
No, no, but, but, but there is protections against RV parks, it can handle.
Parks, yeah.
Well, that's basically what you, if you own six contiguous lots, you put, and there's lots like that?
Well...
It's going to look like an RV park.
It is, but...
It's going to function like it is.
But, yeah, you know, I mean, how do you distinguish that? How do we, how do we distinguish as long as they're on separate lots, you know?
Well, what you saw that's nothing, nothing over 10 years old, it's no change. How you keep it on new ones, and you put new ones in on every single lot, and it functions like it is, you're RVing.
Want to see that, that map? She can show you basically where they're setting them.
This starts picking here, the, the one little, one little trailer that's here on this lot, and the other one sitting back there on this lot. The alley in between?
That's closed.
Yeah, that alley is closed.
Where'd it go?
Well, it's closed. Uh, this one here is still a functioning house. It's still there. This one was, you remember Mr. Hurst? That was the one?
None of them, none of them.
Okay, that's where he built that house, that, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one had the bump, it was right there.
Well, they built that alley.
Huh?
You built that alley?
Yeah, that alley is closed, yeah.
And they're going down?
Yeah, well, she, she bought all those lots.
So when did we approve that?
July 18th.
Did you pay any on that?
July 11th.
Do you want to get a warrant?
To apply?
To apply?
There was 10.
In all?
Yes.
Have you, you're ready to stay on that? Not for those two trailers, for the next ones, but not for those two.
What?
Well, the building...
Well, she bought it.
Did? You want them?
Well, she bought it.
She, I think she bought five lots up there.
There you go, RV parks.
No.
I mean, that's what's tough to protect against, right?
Yeah.
You don't get to pick and choose, I mean...
Of course, she filed on the 11th, but we didn't have a meeting till the 18th, and that's when we had voted for that. And that was a meeting that we actually would have met next.
Yes. But she had already moved, that was in, filed on the 11th, we voted on the 18th, but we didn't see...
She moved with him before she implied.
We didn't see this coming.
Were you, were you?
Well...
Not in July. Did we go?
She bought her lot?
Yes, that and this her, because there's trailers sitting on it. And that one there. I don't know what the other four lots.
Yeah, I think she had, I think she had five. I believe it's five lots, one, two, three, four, five, or three, four, five, come on.
Did it happen?
Put it down there.
I screamed, don't move.
So if she came in here, filled out her paperwork... We voted on the 11th, uh, the 18th for the amendment.
But theoretically, she, she cannot pull the trailers in there until the improvement is built for it.
Correct.
Well, but, but, that's right, they're not going to stand on that, so...
She filed on the 11th, but we didn't even have a meeting until the 18th. And we didn't approve it that time, we accidentally.
But you can't move it in, so it's proof.
Correct.
That's, that's something that we need to start looking over, you know, that the work did not start, or nothing's done before a company like that.
Correct.
But, but...
Well, that's true.
You know?
We've had some do it in the past.
Yeah, we've had a lot of them do it in the past, but, uh, you know, that's something, uh, and we need to look at, you know, whether... Whether it be a fine?
Yeah.
You know, because if you don't have any enforcement, if you don't have any enforcement, then...
They're just going to keep doing it.
Yeah, that's, that's not going to be...
May I get like a credit on?
You don't need to build from the proof. So then all that shit has to stop.
Then you can, you can do, rather a fine, you can do a daily fine.
Others should be like that.
Yes, you just start a daily fine.
Yes.
Start a daily, and then you just, every day.
Yes, others should be like that, please.
Or you can go out and they're building before a permit was involved, and you backdate, two weeks back, how much per day?
So when they fill this out, it tack on a bigger fee?
If you go out there and already built it.
Yeah.
Well, you can, I don't know, we can, but, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of city relations are fixed and assessed.
Correct.
You know? And, you know...
Why you just going to pay for the permit, and then pay the fine, if there is a fine, you want to tie it about a thousand dollars fine, and you're just saying something that'll... Please get your attention, you want to go ahead and pay it.
Yeah.
One of them elders is that, it's a thousand before it gets your attention.
One, one witness says that, that fine often has to go to court.
Right.
That's not...
Was that the occasion for the five lots?
No.
Now, we have a trailer, we have a six. Alley?
It was in those two trailers, that was what this application was called.
I think my concern is what you're talking about. There's five lots of them. Correct. We have defined in chapter 16 of our code, uh, mobile home or travel trailer lot is the fault. A plot of ground within a mobile home or travel trailer park designed for the accommodation of one mobile home or travel trailer. That is what, that's how we define a mobile home or travel trailer park. And then if you go to compliance, no mobile home or travel trailer park shall be operated with the corporate, corporate limits of the city except as provided under this article. And there's a number of things or requirements that we, we have, and I don't know if they have business requirements, in fact, I'm pretty sure they're empty, they haven't met any requirements. Any person owning or operating a mobile home or travel trailer park shall maintain such park and any facilities, fixtures, and permanent equipment in connection therewith... therewith, in a clean and sanitary condition, and shall maintain such equipment in safe and good repair.
We passed that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just telling you. Yeah, this, this is what you've done.
But there's somehow now, it's making me think that we have to go back and redefine language about contiguous lots.
Yeah.
And, 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 if you're running a mobile home park, that you don't call it that because it's just...
Can't contain the city.
Five lots.
That's, that's exactly what I was about to say, is that we're going to have to revisit and redefine, probably this whole chapter.
Yeah, and then you're done here for a couple minutes. We need some guidance, we need some guidance on it, you know, work.
Because we have problems. Theoretically, I don't have a problem with, there's that one on 13th, it's really neat, right down the corner, it looks all clean.
Oh. Right there on the corner, you had a lot percent for all.
Right, so it looks nice, I mean, it's sharp, and we don't have a problem with that at all. But moving in five of them, they change of...
Check them on R14. It doesn't have any canvas or something over the front of it.
Right. Well, I mean...
And they had electrical pole put in the middle of the yard.
Again, that's somehow we've caught that kind of stuff, to protect against that stuff. Well, being to live in the air stream on the beach, I don't want anybody to make that not happen, so, I mean...
Doing a beachfront parking area balance for the unique beach, considering...
I wouldn't be in that, except the lake.
We have a couple of different options on this. With respect to Ms. Fulton. Before we take a vote, any objections with the others?
No.
Okay, I would recommend that we, right now, we vote on the other amendments, or the other building permits, and then we'll take a separate vote on court.
Okay, before?
This is Taylor Landis?
Yeah.
That says a ready-built home, so it's really not...
Well, it's not ready-built, yeah. It's right out.
Check in the board, okay.
Is that a, where's that one in there?
That's the one on 13th.
It's a ready-built on 13th Street and R2.
Yes. And I do have a document that's on hold, now, I've got two more permits to package left. For y'all.
In addition to this?
Yes.
In addition to that, okay.
Uh, Sergio Martinez, that's 202 13th, wants to build an 11 by 30, uh, carport. And Saint Mary's, I don't think they'll do that, I believe. Uh, 24 by 65, uh, covered on.
He already got it, yeah.
Uh... Uh, but, uh, no, this is a different deal, you're talking about more of the old hall, that's, that's different.
Well, they built that one.
Uh, it's on the side of the new, new building. Correct.
Along Fifth Street.
Like, close to that.
Oh. So it's okay on a setback as far as the eyes concerned?
When we run for a call.
Because that trash trick themselves either.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
In a call.
So everything else other than Fulton is A-OK setbacks, everything else has been checked out?
Yes.
Well, would it be wise to table the Fulton permit until we really know what we're looking at?
Well, we need to determine the facts, that case, we need to determine when those trailers from the day versus when the permit is for, well, it's never been approved, right?
Right.
But even if it was here on July, we, we didn't see it in July.
It hadn't been approved.
No, because we...
Right, we haven't approved, yeah.
It's never been approved.
It's never been approved.
So theoretically, I don't know, how you move two trailers without a approval?
Well, the option to this, um, we can deny permit and require the order to remove the trailers from the property at their expense. We can allow them to come in, and then, uh... Sometime between now and the 19th, codify it to where, or at least put a halt on any other, uh, travel trailers over 10 years. I don't agree with codify, um, may, may disagree with me, the intent was pretty clear of what the city council wanted to do on July the 18th, when we, when we changed the ordinance.
The only thing that's in her favor is she did turn in the permit on the 11th.
Yes.
We talked about it late too.
Yes.
Now, my issue is, those trailers are way there. At least one of them was, for sure.
Yeah, either one or both was there before the permit was even submitted.
It's forgiveness rather than permission.
Well, I agree with the, uh, the passes of one of them. But that is in fact, because that's all way on, all the way up, so... That'd be some question about the way it's written, that's another question.
But the intent of the council...
But I think the intent of the council was to pass.
Was, was clear, I mean... It's clear that it is.
But it says, uh, on the, uh, if it was possible, that, um, passes, passes it not through that. It would be the way the ordinance would be.
So the ordinance would backdate to the date that it was voted in?
Yes, the ordinance has, I think.
The ordinance would go in and back to the one I, 18th, technically, July 18th.
Correct.
Do you, we can explore the facts and see whether the trailer houses are in there, I think that's what they're going to be calling.
Are people living in them?
Maybe.
Maybe, I have another meeting.
Are people living in them, or are they...
Oh, no.
I thought I was talking about what? Just kidding, I didn't...
I don't like to hear it, I don't blame you on that, man.
Because, I mean, I wouldn't want to do something that, that would swing, be kicked out.
Right, yeah.
I don't think anybody's living in it.
We don't have any, we didn't suck the water or anything, I don't know.
No, I think it's right there, not over there.
One of those probably was in a sewer plant, you can see it out the side.
On 13th?
I don't know, I'm doing...
Yeah, they ran from the main over there.
Those don't have sewer connections.
They're hooked up?
Whether...
They're either hooked up or close to being hooked up, because they run their sewer line over two of those.
Yeah. Does the fact permit came in before the ordinance was adopted?
Haven't done that one.
Yeah, the ordinance was passed on the 18th.
But we didn't meet till the 18th.
Yeah, it was still, still. It went back to the 18th. It's a problem? But I say it's a problem.
The chain of ours was not proved as such, the wrong, that's the permit, are they?
Sometimes they say, oh, yeah, you're good to go, so...
Well, the issue is, it's a perception as we pass that in response to this permit. I'm saying we did, because I don't remember that permit.
No, I think we were arguing in the, that was in the works months ago.
Yeah, we were arguing processes.
Because we got it, two or three times you brought stuff to us before we reviewed it and passed it.
Alright, I make a motion to reject the building permit from Jimmy Fulton, put the two travel trucks.
There what?
To reject the building permit, move the two travel, travel trucks. Based on the code, which does not allow travel trucks on 10-year hold. Assuming those travel trucks are on 10-year hold.
Sure they are.
Yeah, I would be stunned if they were not.
Second? Come on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I need to...
Should we approve the other building permit?
No, we can do that now.
Okay, we're going to do that, yeah.
I'm going to say that now, uh, motion to accept the other building permits from Carmelio, Alvaro, uh, Manas, correct? And Martinez. And Martinez, and you had two others.
Martin, Martin's and Saint Mary's.
And Saint Mary's Church.
Make the motion that we have two other buildings.
And second.
Second.
Come on, please, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving along. Here's a police activity monthly report from Sergeant Stan.
Oh, we only had one or four calls this last month, eight arrests, um, seven assessments. Uh, take count is a hundred and nine, with the report fines coming over nine thousand. So, um, now I'll have to report. From August. I did, there is a, two copies of the citations that were issued. The staple copy is a hard copy. And the other copy that was in your package, it needs to be.
If y'all have those others, if you can give them, put those to him so he can just run them.
I got two copies.
Like the staple, the staple copy you keep and the other one you look like mad.
Uh, no, they're the same.
One says nine one and the other one says nine six.
One should say detailed and the other one says summary.
There you go.
The detailed report needs to go to standard summary report, you can keep it.
Yeah.
Either one of them.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yes, sir. We did, uh, since the September, we have recovered our stolen vehicle from Tennessee and did capture him yesterday. So, and today, uh, we got, I got to fly with DPS and we flew the creeks looking for illegal girls. So if he saw the chopper just pulling out there, that's what we're doing.
Was that DPS?
Yeah.
Oh, I could not tell if that's DPS or medical.
Yeah, no, uh, I, I had called in the DPS and they said, sure.
Wow.
Come down, anytime we get a suspicious activity or anything. Because we had a, a suspicious activity about people going across the dam.
Okay.
And bringing stuff back and forth.
Okay.
And so our, our main search agent was that, looking in the flood plain area, uh, behind the dam and stuff like that. Seeing if there were any illegal girls or anything like that.
Okay.
So.
We thought the poor matter deck was lost.
I have a quick, quick question real quick for you.
Yes.
And I'm putting you on the spot and I want to give you the, the benefit of, of springing this question on you, you have no idea this is coming. One of the things we're considering purchasing is a drone.
Drone?
A drone. How could you use a drone in? Would, would, would there be a benefit to you using a drone for searches, um, surveillance, what?
Um, searching, I can see that, you know, if we have a lost child or something, I can see that being used, um. It just depends, you know, you're, you're limited on your drone because of the FFA and stuff like that, you gotta have all those certificates and everything.
Assume, assume all those factors.
Um, and if we, if we're approved and everything, any, and from what I can tell, any drone, satellite or view from an aircraft is reasonable search. Because, I mean, technically, I think anybody can do it. I'm not quite sure about the drone.
Okay.
But I have seen some law about that, as long as you're gone through the FFA or.
Yes, yeah, FAA, actually.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, um, and getting all the permits and you're legal to fly.
Right.
So.
Would you, would you, would a warrant be required if, if need be?
So.
Would you have to get a warrant if you wanted to, if you want to fly a drone in my backyard, would you need a warrant?
Um, I'll have to look at case law because I know there's case law on that. I mean, it just depends if it's restricted airspace or, you know, like if the FFA approves you flying so many feet above the city boundary.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I mean, if you're approved, then, you know, there's steps where any normal prudent person can do so. So therefore, it is legal for me to fly a drone over your backyard, because of what I say.
Still, it's good though, once.
I had a fellow sample.
You did, you did give us access?
So I'll look at case law and find out.
Okay.
But I know like the helicopters and stuff like that, anything that we see from the helicopter is considered a reasonable search. And therefore, it can be granted. I mean, we still have to get a warrant beyond the property.
Right.
But that's your probable cause to get the warrant.
They're getting a probable cause from the dead.
Right.
I think that case law being created as we speak.
I'm going, I mean, that, that is, I mean, it's just like.
From an insurance perspective, I don't feel we've gotten one, there's a lot of insurance requirements.
Yeah.
Because all of a sudden you're subject to all kinds of lawsuits as a product. It's a, it's a.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I look into it, I have not heard of, you know, unless you're like SWAT or something that, for special tactics.
Right.
Having a drone. But not just a normal police department, use it for stuff like that, so.
But then it worked for you this morning rather than the helicopter, it worked a bit this morning, but.
Yeah, it worked a bit this morning.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, good to see you, men and women, bye, weekly report.
Uh, you have, uh, financials for the period ending August thirty-one. Um, this is the eleventh month of fiscal year and so, um, you can see those things. We are, um, in the black, we both the general and water, general fund's up two thirty-nine. I think our water fund is up, I wanna say thirteen thousand. And so, we're doing pretty well, uh, from that standpoint. Any questions specifically on any, or while, or if we want to answer? While you are, or using those documents, following our bottom line, we're up two eighty-one five points six, we're going into the fourth. Um, a couple of things, the schedule, uh, y'all should have this, this fancy memo that I took a template from, I think that was in September, everybody's question. Of course, we got today's meeting, next Monday, we will meet at five for a workshop and five fifteen for a tax rate hearing. And then on the nineteenth, we'll meet at five fifteen for a budget hearing, uh, that's required by the state. And we will meet at five thirty for a regular city council meeting where we will adopt the tax rate and the fiscal budget. Uh, we will need a quarrel for the tax rate hearing, the budget hearing, and obviously for the city council meeting. So, uh, please put these dates on your calendar, if I need to bribe you with pie. Can you get your order in there? Um, also on the calendar, uh, September the twenty-eighth, uh, the Western Texas Council of Governments is having their sub-region five meeting, um, which I have been invited to attend. So I will be in attendance. Um, we talked about the letter from CRWD, uh, the per thousand rate is now a dollar forty-one, it was a dollar fifty-seven a year ago. And so, uh, we adjusted the budget accordingly to that. Um, that'll be about a twenty-five hundred dollar a month savings, um, uh, to us. And so, um, we look forward to paying less money for bad water. Great water, right, Randy?
No, it's bad. You're invited to come out, no.
I have done that a couple of times. If you really are having a good day and you want to feel snobbish for four other reasons, he's got a test tube over there that'll knock you down. In fact, why don't you bring it in? Well, I'm for it.
Robin says you do not leave your shoes in the car after you've been out there. Doing whatever you're doing at the lake because they will stink.
We were there yesterday and I didn't have, I didn't smell anything.
Did I?
Oh, not at I, no, at our.
No, our, our, I was the problem.
Okay.
Right now, we're using fifty-fifty I'll be valid.
Um, a couple of things, Scotty came to me, um, we will probably have your consideration at the next meeting, um, either ordinance or some sort of, and obviously working with the police department. Uh, you know, we paid, uh, or, or resealed that street from Fraysmigos. One of the worst streets in town or between the.
Which is that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they are allowing eighteen-wheelers to come in and use it at park, which is fine. Problem is the eighteen-wheelers are making a U-turn on our new street and they are tearing up our new street. Um, Scotty was wondering if he had options, uh, to curtail that behavior. Taxpayers put a lot of money into that street and then the trucks have beaten it up pretty good. Is that the train or is that the car?
Well, the only way to do that is to curb.
You can put, you can put poles up in the middle of the streets, you can put a, a, a.
That's generally how they do it, is they just curb it somehow, so if you want to turn around, you gotta do it in that parking lot.
Yeah, yeah. There's a number of things that we can do, um, but we wanted to, we didn't have time to get this on the agenda, we wanted to come to you. Um, one of the things is we wanted to visit with Trucker, uh, because I think it's just one vehicle. We wanted to visit with him on an individual basis to see if he would voluntarily, you know, comply. Um, uh, he suggested Scotty mind his own business, let's just put it that way. Um, and Scotty came to me and said, what are our options? And I said, I will talk to council and we will get back with you guys for something to occur in the future. I strongly recommend it because it is what a credit strip is going to be the street up.
Well, uh, if we put up a lifeguard ramp, we'll put up a real good lifeguard ramp. That's all that. Occur, then you're lost.
Right.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt the nineteen wheeler anymore.
It is because of our city ordinance as far as not parking in the residence, they have to park somewhere. So they have a gently cap. Yeah, there's still some there.
Yeah.
But is that what this is, most likely?
I'm not sure where you live, have you lived in your house somewhere?
But who?
Who is it? Probably the same guy that started up this trucking neighborhood.
It's an SSI on Midland.
Yeah.
Oh, good driver is.
Okay.
Um, let's see here, uh, I'll get some, I'm just kinda jumping around. Uh, we made some improvements to the plaza. We have bought, uh, made a trip to Laredo, Texas last week. We bought some land posts that should be installed sometime this week. Uh, we bought an antique clock. Uh, we rehinged it, it doesn't work, but it's ringing twice a day. She's keeping a walk. But we're, we're making some improvements, this is in conjunction with projects students are doing, uh, for the, for their leadership project. Um, I think people will be very pleased with how the plaza is going to look, uh, in the coming weeks. Um, I have, uh, I was asked by TML and I accepted an appointment to their resolutions committee. And so, uh, that's part of their legislative process, either support or kill bills. And so, um, uh, they wanted an answer and I told them, yes, if y'all have a problem with that, I'll be more happy to resign if y'all. There shouldn't be a conflict or anything with Ballinger or in that nature.
Right up your alley, you can do good on that.
Yes, sir. Um, I did get a petition this afternoon and so, um, this is certainly not for debate or consideration, uh, but just wanted you to know. The petition was circled, um, among businesses downtown. It says to whom it may concern, I had become aware of a conflict with, with a local business and a protest for parking a barbecue trailer on the street from the building of, um, I guess, the Texas State. I personally, as a neighboring business, thinking add that to our street, it is in no way a traffic hazard. We all use sidewalks displays to call attention to our storefronts. Why not this, my employees and I agree, this is good. We support Smokey Joe's barbecue and hope he can continue this practice. And I've got an whole signature on here, I have not verified anything. I did want you to know that we did get a petition signed from the downtown businesses.
And there is another petition going around from the downtown businesses to move Smokey Joe's back. That's right, yeah.
Moving what?
Moving capital products. Cannot have the, there is another petition to move, yeah, moving out.
Um, as a matter of, of.
They probably want to live over there where they are.
As a matter of, um, I guess, reference or whatnot, um, we did address this issue back in April of twenty fifteen. Um, we allowed a variance for a period of thirty days. Um, I think it was just going to see how it worked out and how it played out. And up until, uh, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, we hadn't really heard anything one way or the other. I haven't heard anything official from anybody. Uh, this is the first document I've received on Smokey Joe's since I've been sitting here. So, um, uh, that will be something that we will probably have to address in the future, um, uh, when this comes to a head. Uh, the last thing is, uh, we're going, we're funding and I meant to get this on executive, I apologize to you, Randy, for making me sit here for an hour, but I'm pretty sure you were thoroughly entertained.
For a guy like you. He's been over there knocking off.
Can man, or bacon, egg, cheese, and potato, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, three of them. Three of them, three. Three of them.
What time is it?
Um, I will say that the intent, let's go to executive, discuss a number of things, um. I will say that generally, um, we were approved for thirty million dollars of grant funds with seventy percent forgiveness. Uh, the city of Brady is not coming in for funding. Um, I do not ask why, I do not get portions in the mouth. Um, but we did have an extensive conference call with Water Village Board, uh, was it last Monday? And, um, um, we have a couple of options, uh, as far as the panel project goes, as far as, um, pipelines go and things of that nature. We have some options available. Um, but we will be discussing those at the next city council meeting, uh, in the executive session. And that is, uh, there it is.
I should get the exact wording in that, uh, coming up there.
The exact wording of the petition?
Yeah. No, the non-petition, I think.
We got it. The Fulton?
Yeah. One of the guy's court.
The one that's.
Okay. Get it, get it into the call book?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know I sent this picture to you, but I'm going to ask this of you. At the Old Park Hotel, they put up a sign, their only sign that says no parking. Uh, you will be towed, you can park in front of the Old Park Hotel next to Almonte, is that enforceable? Is that legal for them to do that? Because it didn't come to council.
Not if it's on the public street.
Yeah, it's on public street where people park.
No, I've never been coming in.
Old Park Hotel did not come in and ask.
No, not the Old Park Hotel, but the house next door.
Yeah, because that's a driveway. Yes.
No, this is, if it's a driveway, not walk it.
No, these are in front of that building and they put that sign.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
You can stop and let it sit.
Uh, they've been up, the sign itself is not able to hang on the street.
The problem is, we pay for the papers. You have to take a run downtown.
But I'm wondering, what are people gonna do when they see that? Are they really going to think they're going to be towed?
Uh, it's not like they got a, like, a thing that's turned red. So that was. So that way you wouldn't have people parking in front of this house.
Oh, yeah, the one by the school, yeah, I knew that was illegal.
So, I mean, if you block a driveway, you can be.
You can be towed.
You can be towed. Now, I don't know if I've ever seen that driveway done yet.
No, I don't think anyone is living in that building now, next to the Old Park Hotel.
Yeah, that was Steve Bruce, still has a shop in there.
He still has.
So he still drives through there.
And those signs are still there, and as far as I know, no one ever goes off that truck. But this is a green sign on Old Park Hotel's building.
Then, there's no driveway or anything, they can, they're illegal to park there.
It's public street.
But the sign, that having the sign out is not illegal, it's just not an enforcement.
I mean, if you, if you, you know, they had a little gift shop in there or something, that's not for sale, you know, that's what I.
What it was?
Well, you know, it's more or less, I mean, they can put it up, but it's not enforceable.
Okay.
Is this a new owner?
Uh, my.
I believe someone bought it, I believe someone bought it.
I knew it was for sale, that's what I was asking, if it was a new owner.
I'm assuming so, but I, apparently he didn't know that he can.
Yeah, as long as there's no driveway or anything, or fire extinguisher, I don't think there's anything there, they won't be able to.
I hate to bring this up, but actually, the porch and everything in front of that building, blocks the street.
Correct, just like the state.
Yeah, just like the state.
That was one other thing too, um, I've been approached by a number of businesses downtown, um, to get some assistance, uh, with Textile as far as signage and improvements go, and, um, I don't think, uh, I don't think we'll have a problem with having some discussions with Textile about, uh, trying to improve the, the look of downtown, uh, trying to improve signage downtown, um, things of that nature. Uh, essentially, what I was told they were replicating what winters had, replicate some of the things that are going on in Frederickburg. You know, we have a district engineering studio that's new, and so, um, you know, take their concerns to, to Textile. And so I don't, I don't see a problem with, with giving them some assistance, thinking that we can do to help our businesses down.
And there may be some grants that Kenny can check in.
For Textile? Uh, those.
That or that beautiful case?
Yeah, those things drive up the mall, yeah, yeah, a long time ago.
All right, anything else?
We trip in down?
What?
We're gonna be tripping down?
Yes.
I'm moving on to that.
Okay. Hey, everybody, it's Richard Dan, I was from city council, where do you have this, Phil?
I think we need to look at, uh, Paul's Robert later, about fines for not filing building permits.
Building.
Kind of time of the day.
About filing building permits?
You know, and we need to look at the fines.
Global home parks.
Our, our B or.
Well, in the same.
Well, and that other part in that book too, you know, we really need to look at that lot, where.
I think what's critical is gonna be continuous, is what, continually continue that.
I mean, we're not a burden to, well, homes being moved in, well, there are too, right? But, but, but we don't, we do, we don't wanna create global home parks or hard new parks without people.
Right, cause we do have that, and that's what we were trying to come to do three years ago. Okay, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn?
I must get motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Come on, please, say aye.
Aye.